...in touch with.
Perfect, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good job, keep on, keep on, keepin' on. So, now we'll move on to new business. Either A, they're rezoning this from L and M.
Yeah, you have two planning commission related items. The first one is a request to rezone Carson Land O' by L and M Construction from R2, residential to C2 general commercial. Planning Commission had a public hearing on April 30th. There was a number of people that attended and expressed different levels of concern about the proposal. And the planning commission recommended, their action was to recommend that the council approve it with conditions. So your options are either approve, disapprove, or table it, send it back to the planning I'll just real quickly read the conditions. To provide exterior screening, no outdoor storage, truck traffic to access from Red Wing to Knight Street, no construction assembly occurring outside the building, the building shall be aesthetically designed, the applicants shall provide a site plan to the city council, and renderings of the building which they have done, you should have that in your packet. So, that's where that one goes, but all I would have as part of summary information.
Hello, gentlemen. Comments? What was that?
Comments on the rezoning? Do you have anything to say on it? I'm asking for comments from councilors.
Well, looking at it, I would recommend that we send it back to the planning commission, being that it's a more complete plan now that's come forward than what we had at that particular time when that decision was made. And it gives the opportunity for L and M to present their case, and it also gives a better opportunity for the residents up in that area to voice their opinion.
Richard? Well, I had received an email where there were some people who vehemently opposed.
Actually used that word in?
Yes, in quotes. And I guess, from what the planning commission said, they couldn't see any reason not to approve it. And as the email said, I'm not sure that the planning commission was listening to the people who were opposed to it. And they hinted at that, or maybe even more than hinted. I, right offhand, I can't see any good reason to approve it. But I am with Doug in that I think it should be sent back. There are some questions that are unanswered.
This is a decision that really the councilors can't really, shouldn't be making because we rely on the planning commission. The planning commission, their members been on there for many years, and they recommend to the council, I think.
No, the question is there is they recommend.
Right, they recommend, we gotta pass it, and I don't think we have, because of all the questions, I'd agree with Doug, that send it back to the planning commission, and then next meeting, you'll have that, and it will be yes, no, or people. And I'll go along with that.
Now, I was not able to be at that hearing, so I can't comment at all on what went on there. I've got no idea, I was in Leroy that night. From what I have seen since then, on the face of it, I guess I'm not ready to make a move that we accept it either, so apparently we don't have anyone who is prepared to make a motion that we accept it, except their recommendation.
So, this is a question, I guess, as a follow-up with Scott, with the 60-day approval, what would be the best way to handle this? Could it just be turned out, or I mean, can it be tabled, is what I'm trying to say, and sent back?
Sure, a couple of different ways to do that. If there's time, and we're not running into the 60-day issue, that certainly can happen. But based on what I see in the packet, you run meetings and get back to the next council meeting, will you overrun?
You're gonna go over it, yeah.
So, there's a couple of different ways. One, the applicant can provide notice for the city that they're willing to extend the 60-day time period. City council also has the ability if they want, and can state why they want the matter, more time to review, more information to review, and why it's being sent back to the planning commission, and extend 60 days on its own. So we have those options. So, either of those two ways work, if it's a situation where the council wants to table, recommend the planning commission to look at this, review questions that you folks have, and you can give those questions to Mark, and Mark will bring those to the planning commission. That should be sufficient to say, city council wants to extend the 60-day time period for review, and the planning commission is to review, and we return this to the city council in 60 days, 80 minutes. And simple motion to have it back, to table, ask the planning commission to review, you will provide any other questions, you attend the meeting with questions, and 60-day notice be provided by staff to the applicant, that would be sufficient.
Well, quite honestly, I will say this here, I can only speak for myself, which I will take the line for. I don't think anybody was really prepared, and that's why I feel like we should go back and review this, so that everybody has a clear look at it, and a good decision made that should suit everybody with it. I just feel that that's the only way to do the proper thing, is send it back.
So, should we take that as you are making the motion to proceed, as Scott just?
I will then, yes, I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. So that will come back at our next meeting also. Item B, conditional use permit application related to middle school, middle and high school expansion for KW School District. It is again recommended by the planning commission, and I don't think we got any dispute on this item. I think nothing. Have any requests from Mr. Pesta, or?
Well, we were at the planning commission, and one of the things that we had a request for was to bring somebody from the construction manager to answer any questions and talk about the plan for how they implemented the construction, because the, at the development committee and the planning committee, we have the architect from TSP there, and so today I brought along Arthur Clintock from RA Gordon Construction Managers, and he'll be the onsite manager for the projects at Canyon in Wantomingo. And so, he's here today, you know, if there are any questions that anybody has, or if you'd like him, for Mark to give a kind of a summary of how they go about from the time that this is approved, to the construction starting, with the procedures that they use. They're very familiar with working in outstate communities, and the kind of questions that they get, and the impact that they have on those communities with construction going on, and would be happy to offer that if it's of value to you, if you're prepared for that as well. Initially with the, the first time this was presented, we had some kind of artist renderings of what the key components of the additions would look like, and they weren't available at the planning commission meetings, so we got those to the city staff, so that they could be included here today as well, to get kind of a, more than use your imagination as to what they're going to look like.
What is the purpose of the expansion? Is it, well, are we getting?
We're worried last year.
Hey, are we getting a big influx of students, or are these new amenities that they're getting?
That part can summarize really quick for you, and Administrator Ballson, if you could slide through this, go through the slides as I bring up each item, we'll talk about specifically what they are. So this would be the view from the main parking lot and approaching the school, and what you see all the way over the right-hand side is where the main entrance is right now. It doesn't meet ADA code and a lot of other safety issues with the slope and the grade as we approach there. We also had a lot of issues with visitors getting in and out of the building, and we don't have a secure entrance right now, which should always be a concern, but especially in the last 20 years, it's become a major concern since 98, when the last work was done there. It has no access control whatsoever. So what you see in this vision here, everything from the far right, going through the center, and then to that canopy. The canopy is a place where people getting dropped off, right at the canopy, getting undercover, and being able to access that control access point, being met by a greeter, and being allowed to go into the school building if they meet that criteria, or to go into the new fieldhouse component of it. So, when you look at that canopy area, you see the windows at the upper level, the windows are on the new fieldhouse area, and everything to the right of that that looks similar is the current gymnasium and the commons that feed into that. So there'd be a whole new control access point, a whole new commons area that welcomes visitors, gives a good first impression, great curb appeal, controls access from a security standpoint, and also is used as flexible learning space for the students and the staff, and for community use after hours, weekends, and things like that. One of the primary functions of the adding the fieldhouse space is a lack of gym space, currently unsafe conditions for fitness center, weight training, and things like that, not only minimal space, but also very unsafe space, that would be included in there, virtually lower minimal space for athletic training, that's included in the fieldhouse space. And also, we're upgrading the space that many of our sports teams have to use in season, specifically the wrestling team, goes from an old gymnasium to a dedicated space where they can keep their mats and equipment, and have an ideal space for that. So those things are a part of that initial front view there. If we roll to the next vision, this is the opposite end, so going over towards the east side of the building, there is currently an entrance point used for early childhood programs that's in the back of the building. We're moving that entrance to the front, a very kind of cavernous-like, not very visually appealing entrance, so it'd be reconstructed to let light in, once again be a secure access point, so those families coming in for early childhood programs. And then, what you see on the right with the windows there, is the area that's currently the middle school gym, and is used by wrestling and community ed and other programs, that gets converted into an early childhood indoor activity center with light coming in, and then the community ed and early childhood programs go down that hallway toward the back end of there. There's improvements in the fifth and sixth grade area, plumbing, overall restroom, electrical upgrades, landscaping upgrades, just the flow of the parking lots and the traffic in and out of the facility, those are your major upgrades from the building perspective. We have one more, that's the backside. So there, what you'd see as you look at that, is coming from the opposite side, the backside of the school. As you look at that to your left, the tall pinkish part is the current gym, and you see the fieldhouse attached to it. When you put the two together, you also have not only the access to four courts, but also a walking track, so, and space that can be used for community education, and could be leased or reserved by the community or other renters during the school day without having access into the school building. So it expands a lot of the community space. This is just the backside view of it, it's not meant to give the curb appeal like the front is, but the reddish colored brick in this drawing, which you see right where the two gym spaces come together, that back part would be where the fitness center is located, so it's got light going to the back, and it's an overall upgraded campus. Part that we don't have drawings of is also redoing the entire athletic complex across the street, so that the track becomes a durable surface, all-weather track, and six-lane all-weather track. The football field is regraded, so that it drains, that it's safer, and is irrigated, which also adds not only to the quality of the turf, but to the safety. And the community experience, all of the bleachers and the fan accommodations are now pulled to one side altogether, over there on the west side, virtually east side, mostly to the east side there, and that there is an ADA compliant access switchback that takes people down to that seating area, the pro's desk, that before had concessions, something would be used just for officials and for timing for track needs and things like that. The fan experience is all on one side, and then there's new spaces for up-to-date field events, which some of them we currently have and some we don't have. So that's kind of a quick summary of what's going on in that whole Canyon Center. There are some things going on to improve facilities at Wantomingo, but we'll talk to the Wantomingo City Council on the 14th about that, this is the.
Ken, you may want to consider a second career in real estate at some point, because.
Did I sell it to you?
I've seen you sell those concepts to so many different audiences, you've got better advertising.
Yeah, that's the summary of what we're getting from it. And the part that Mark is here, if you have questions specifically, or want a summary about how do we go about making all that happen, and what's the timeline, what's the impact to the community, because obviously it takes materials and workers and heavy equipment and things like that to make that happen.
I do have a comment that probably pertains to the planning commission that asked tonight here, and when you were here, what, when did we meet, Monday?
Monday the 30th.
Monday, and that is, I have to tell you that you have it well planned out, and like the mayor said, I think you, it should probably go into real estate, or you got it by memory already. And this is one of the things that I'm looking at is.
Presentations dependent upon the audience.
Yeah, is looking at, with the planning commission, you come prepared. I gotta give you credit for that, where we just had somebody that has to come back. It takes our time up, it takes that individual's time up. You came prepared, and I appreciate that from a planning commission member, and also from a council member, that you sold yourself by bringing everything that you have here. I certainly appreciate it.
The other part was, we know that, especially Mark, is actually going to be, you could call it living here in Canyon, he'll have a trailer onsite in Canyon, and.
Job trailer.
Job trailer, but yeah, it would be his home away from home, and we wanted to introduce Mark to you, and you'll see him, anything from council meetings to getting a lunch, or whatever else it is around town, and it's gonna be, gonna be.
Well, if I ever get done with work, I gotta come over and see him.
He's gonna be honorary, a member of the Canyon community, he'll know that new logo and everything, but.
That's right.
He's got a night shirt already, he's ready to go.
So, are we ready to move on?
I am ready to make the motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation on improved conditional use permit related to middle, high school expansion. I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, got it. And now, we get on to Wayne's project, redrifting the lab and digester building and wastewater treatment plant.
So, currently, both roofs are leaking, the digester building, which in some quotes be the two-tank building, leaks worse.
Two-tank?
Yeah, they called it a two-tank. I mean, a first responder called, I couldn't tell, they called it a two-tank, not one-tank. The two-tank building on the one, that's the digester building. Currently, they're both.
Somebody broke you, sorry.
There's a lot of lightning going on when I came in, so.
We're drugging breaker.
That's smoke, that smell?
In the dirt?
Yeah.
Continue.
Okay, so, yeah, it feels like the roof were, the buildings were roofed in 09 by Colburn, just an interior job. They're, everybody that I had to give a cold look at it, say, the insulation's soft, you gotta start over. They all recommended that adhered roof versus a ballasted roof, just for many, if you find leaks, you can repair, they can repair instead of putting all that rock on top of the roof. The rock requires maintenance, you have to shove it back to the sides, a good roof would last longer, it'd just be easier to work with.
I think, just to get back to what we were talking about too, remember we were going through the fire station development, and we had looked at the options of the ballasted roof versus the adhered roof. The architect, Corrigan Runton, had talked about how the benefits of the adhered versus the ballasted, and that the cost difference is small enough that you are much better off to go with the adhered roof rather than the ballasted. And one of the key things was, if you do have leaks in the future on the adhered roofs, it's much more easy to pinpoint where that leak is, so you can get it repaired, whereas with the ballasted roof, that's lit under the member, and then you have to try and chase and figure out where that leak is.
So, I met with four different contractors on it, one contractor, all they wanted to do was ballast the roof, so he kind of threw that one out. One contractor spooked twice as much as the other two. I'm kind of recommending chandering roofing to their E D M roof. I know it's a little bit more funny, but the, I think the service that I received from being quotes was better, and I talked to some peers and fellow people in the construction business, and they liked chandering roofs. Ballman Roof was the ones that did a fire hall, I mean, they did a good job there too, just.
So, bottom line, what's the price difference between the two? Labens terms, are you?
Chander's $5,000 more.
What are we gonna give for that $5,000?
Hopefully a better roof.
Yeah, see, this is a subjective thing, to be honest with you.
They're both a 15-year material warranty, 20-year contractor warrant.
And, you know, we had some small issues, but I mean, I can't say that it passed, I mean, that it, you know, basically the bottom line is it passed the, let's, the Firestone that made the.
Firestone sells the.
The rubber, so their representative came, remember, went up on the roof and certified it, so it passed.
So, but they're both using the same material and stuff like that?
Yes, oh yeah.
It's just the application. Is that, is that where the price difference is, in the application?
No, it's just the price difference in there, it's the same thing.
It's the name.
That's what it is, it's just the same specs.
It's the service too, I mean, there were some other services at that fire hall that may not have happened if somebody else would have done it. You know, there were some issues like spilt glue on the walls, just.
Well, there were some delays too, when they could have been working.
One of the biggest issues with Ballman is they missed the window of the good weather when you want to have the.
Plan, planning.
It's just, sometimes you give what you pay for, this is one of the instances.
We know that, so I like, like you say, we gotta justify, I gotta justify, when people ask, okay, why'd you go to one over the other, when the other was $5,000 cheaper? So if you can say, yes, we had problems with this particular company and got fired off, so we chose Chandler, so, I mean, that's.
Well, we had, you know, we were a little concerned about timing issues, but I'm not gonna split hairs with it, I mean, I'm not going to say that, is that worth $5,000 or not, I can't answer that question, because both of them are reputable companies, you know, Ballman, their roof passed, but I felt that they should have gotten out there sooner, we felt that they should have been more timely. When Wayne called them, it was kind of the same deal. Their quote came in today, their callbacks weren't as timely. Is that $5,000? I will not and cannot answer that question, because I think, if you ask me, can they do the work, they can do the work. But, again, you do have this.
All the other issues.
Yeah, so.
It's not the money issue.
I don't know how you quantify that, but I can't tell you either that everything from a fall-through standpoint was where I liked it, because it wasn't. It's a subjective thing.
I have no problems spending the $5,000, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be more satisfied.
Yeah, I mean, Joe, I don't know how you, you know.
Frankly, I'm a little bit.
I wanna buy that.
Yep.
All of that.
Roof is going to hold up, considering the conditions that they did some of the work under.
Remember, I stated that many times, I'm very, very concerned, and we put on notice, you know, so.
I think the key thing we had there was, I can't remember what the brand name of that roof over there was.
It's first.
But they had to have their people come up and certify it. Well, first, the contractor had to be pre-qualified upfront to install their product, and then they had to have their representatives come out and certify that installation was done to their standards, and so then they would provide the full warranty coverage. So, we did get through it, but it, yet it wasn't more involved in more, you know, it took a lot more effort than it should have, you know, and primarily because the contractor had committed themselves to too much work, and they did not schedule what they intended to meet, and then they wound up missing the good window of weather, and, you know, it sounds like you're experiencing a little bit of the same thing here now, with response time due, and, you know, the callbacks, and then getting pulled here, later than others got their pull-in. How do you put an dollar value on it, I guess?
Yeah, I.
We never, unless you tried to estimate the additional staff time it would take to manage. And you could try and put a dollar value to that, but.
Who do we have more confidence in? Probably Chandler.
I'm agreeing with both of you. Exactly. That being said, I, I'll make your make motivation or motion that we go with Chandler.
I'll second that.
Well, in that case. On favor?
Aye.
So, there we go. Now, we need, on the next item, hiring municipal swimming pool employees, so we just need one motion to approve all these.
We listed in the memo, direct. I took them off the agenda because they, for, I don't know, the last several years I've been listing it, and I don't think we need their names on there, but I put them in the memo, and.
And for the same reason, I don't think I need to read them out, no.
They've done a fantastic job.
Great managers who are direct shot up.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that one then.
On favor?
Aye.
Working new employees for the summer. Prove Memorial Day parade permit for May 28, 2018. And I'll make a motion that they approve that.
I'll second that one.
On favor?
Aye.
League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage Waiver. And this is something that every year up till now, we have chosen to not waive the coverage, L and M. And there's no reason to change that. Gentlemen? Are you willing?
I agree.
It costs us more money, and. Nothing bad's gonna happen. Part-time, item G then. Higher part-time bartender Savannah Smith.
I'm sure you need a motion just to approve that. Isn't that what we've done in the past, Mark? That we basically would recommend you submit that back?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have to pass a motion. That.
That wasn't in the memo.
Not waived. Yes.
I bet you won't.
Yeah, I would suggest a motion to continue the city's fast practice to not waive and resubmit to LMCT with that.
So moved. Second. On favor?
Aye.
So, now, we get to item G, the hiring part-time bartender. Motion is needed. If you're there. So much so moved. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. KMU meeting Wednesday, May 16th, 6:00 p.m. Gidig County Board meeting here Tuesday, May 15th, 9:00 a.m. And our next regular council meeting Tuesday, June 12th, at 7:00 p.m. And somewhere, a council work session at, the time and date can be determined. Council staff general comments.
There will be a lot of items on the county board agenda, if any place in the city attending that, probably be a bad meeting. They're gonna have a full slate of items on their agenda, so.
I actually was, I found when that was last on the schedule, and, oh.
Yeah, it keeps getting longer and longer.
Do you dislike it here?
Yeah, that's good. We're the only city, apparently, they go to besides, you know, the paragons.
Well, it's nice that they notice that's way out here on the end of the district once a year, at least. Most of the time, they kind of forget that we're out here, I think. Red? I have nothing at this point.
I'm glad we don't live by volcano. At least we've not worked out.
No, actually, you know, there's been volcanoes in this area in the distant past.
Yes.
Under Lake Pirata is an ancient dormant volcano.
And a huge crack.
I've seen the seismic. Whatever you call it, seismic graph, I give it, seismic graph. Seismic graph would be the best one. Doug? Well, I would say I'm glad that spring is here, everything is turned and green, and men are all.
At least it's pregnant.
No, it's spring. What's that? Nope. Nothing's there.
I was just gonna say, Blizzard's not a god.
I think I definitely prefer blizzards to lava floors. Yeah, you tell the former, you're like that worm.
I'll second that.
Aye. Aye.
Go ahead. Meeting in turn.
You're almost ready.
No, I think he's getting hungry.